Hello and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, October 17th, 2017, of the Morro Bay Planning Commission here at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay. We have a quorum, although we are a little shorthanded, so this meeting will come to order. At this point, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? Want to go? Richard? Okay, thanks. We have no presentations tonight, so moving on to the consent calendar, we have the current and advanced planning and processing list, and at this point, there's, I don't think we require any action on that. We just receive and file?
You can make a motion to accept it.
Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll move we accept.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, three zero. Okay, moving on to public hearings. This is, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped over the public comment period, so if we have anybody from the, from the public that would like to speak to the Planning Commission now, that are on items that are not on the agenda, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Nancy Beatty. I live at 564 Acacia Street, and I am a neighbor to 660 Shasta. And at 660 Shasta, what was permitted by the building department as a carport teardown with some remodeled model has resulted in a complete teardown with plans for a new house. I would like to see, and believe is appropriate, to have this project go before the Planning Commission and to be posted for neighborhood review. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Betty Winholtz, and I'm a neighbor of Ms. Beatty, and she meant 260 Shasta. Several of the neighbors are concerned about this project. I had the opportunity to talk to Scott this afternoon about it, and I appreciate that. At the same time, while the city is seeing some errors that were committed, we still feel as a neighborhood that this is a planning situation, not just a building situation. They were given the building permit because it was supposed to be a remodel, but now, since it's a brand-new house, we feel it should have the planning review, because some things haven't been done, like the surveying, the fire department review, and probably some other things that I'm not even aware of. So I don't know that, what that relationship is between how forceful you can be with the Director of Planning, or how stubborn he'll be with his perspective, but we would appeal it if we had the opportunity, but I don't know if we have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Scott, would you like to?
Yeah, we have a house that we issued a building permit for at 260 Shasta. It included, it was a remodel and addition, and the description of the project was a remodel and addition. When you looked at the plans, though, it was mostly demo reconstruct. And so what happened is, the applicant came through the process and had several conversations with staff when they were developing their plans and what that would look like, and the plan set that they have, again, the plants, the back end of the plans that show the demo portion of it had a few walls standing, and that was it. And what a few walls means is pretty much some two-by-four standing, because you remove the cladding on either side of it, and there's not much left, so, before that goes off. And so what had happened is that when the contractor got into the project, he went out there and was demoing the house and took down those, took down all the walls, and so what was left is the foundation. The plans do show them maintaining the foundation and then adding on to the foundation to do an addition at the back. There are no, for an addition and remodel, there are no conforming addition, there are no requirements for discretionary permits, either from the Planning Commission or staff, on the planning side of things for that. And so it was issued simply a building permit, although that is something we are changing in our zoning code updates. It's a conversation we had with you when we showed you the general provisions section. It was, this was one of the items to avoid, so the neighborhood would know when significant remodels were happening and additions. So they took it down, we took a look at the plans. I would say it was partially a result of the plans being somewhat poor in their development and what they showed, somewhat, maybe a little bit of a miss on the part of staff, seeing what that was going to result in, and with the couple of walls that were left. Oftentimes, what you see when you see just a couple of walls left standing, those walls will end up going away, because it's either, it's either more difficult to work around them, or those framing members are no longer viable to be maintained, and they get torn down. Again, there was a bit of a disconnect, it seems, between the contractor and then the folks that actually came in and got the permits, the owner. But moving forward, I would say it took part of the blame on the part of the city in not recognizing that and maybe requiring some additional information up front. And what we ended up doing is allowing the building permit to continue, because the house remains unchanged, it's going to look the same as it was going to look in the building permit application, and it was always going to have a majority of the thing being reconstructed. The only thing they didn't leave was the couple of two-by-fours that were out there. So that is a hole that's in our code, and it's, you know, sort of a discretionary decision on my part to allow it to move forward. And again, I would say part of the culpability on that resides with staff and with the plans. And so I made the decision to allow the project to move forward, because again, the house remains unchanged.
Is there a process for appeal?
Building permits are not a discretionary action. Our code doesn't have an appeal process for those. And so it really is up to me. And so that's, that's how this project's moving forward. I know that the neighborhood was concerned, I understand that concern. I also know that, you know, the folks that were moving forward with the project are invested and have their plans to move forward, and again, I think it was a little bit of a disconnect in, in between what was being shown and what they ended up doing, but there wasn't going to be much sitting out there to begin with. And so that was, again, maybe a little bit of a miss on our part in looking through the plans and recognizing that. But when I did, it was pretty clear that it wasn't surprising what happened, and so understanding that, I allowed the project to move forward.
Are there any non-conformities in the reconstruction?
It meets all of the setback requirements, and has two enclosed parking spaces that are in tandem.
Okay.
A portion of our ordinance does allow for that. In fact, it allows you to, it allows you, when you have an existing garage and you can't put the conforming parking back, to have it in open air, and so we were able to work it out, so it ends up being enclosed. Yeah, I mean, so that's also something in our ordinance, we're sort of going to be readdressing in the zoning code.
So if this was a new, if this was a new construction coming forward, if they, they came in with a complete demo plan and then came forward with a new, a new construction on this house, it would, it would meet, it would meet all the regulations, it wouldn't necessarily come before the Planning Commission?
It wouldn't become before the Planning Commission, no. It would be, it would be noticed, and would go through a staff-level permitting process for coastal development permit.
Okay.
Again, one of the holes in our ordinance allows you to do substantial additions, as long as we're conforming to non-conforming structures, and it's really just approved at staff level. Through a building permit, you know, there's no notice that happens, and so that's one of the major changes that we made in the code, to do the zone clearance portion of it, so that we do send the notices out to 500 feet when we get those, because the, you know, the neighborhood doesn't have knowledge of that moving forward, so. But our code right now doesn't accommodate that.
Okay. Seeing this isn't a noticed item, you know, is that pretty much the limit of our discussion?
It's not something you can really discuss, no.
Pardon?
It's not, it's not an agendized item for discussion.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so conceptually, the, you know, the concept behind it could be, you know, put on the future agenda, and if you want to talk about it, like, the next meeting or something, we could do that.
I think that's, I think we're kind of, our hands are tied. I hope that the questions help the community, but I think at this point, we'll, we'll move forward, and maybe a discussion for the City Council, and this is definitely something we're, we're going to be addressing in the, in the new zoning update. So I think these were, we specifically have an item in the, in the, in our discussion about substantial, this is substantial remodel.
It was, we were doing zone clearances, it was zone clearances, as we called it, for any, for any of these, one, these items that would otherwise be allowed by, right, through the building permit process, just so we do get the notice out there, because when we do some of these things, the neighbors are like, why come we didn't know about it? And we're like, well, it's a conforming addition, and there's no requirement for us to know. Even if it was like a two-story addition, there's no requirement. It's, we can't make, we can't make processes up on our own at the staff level, we have to follow the processes that are in our code.
Right.
And so that's a, that was a hole that we've, we're plugging moving forward.
Okay. Well, thanks for bringing this to our attention, and at this point, I don't think we can have any more discussion on this, because it's not a noticed item. So, so moving, moving forward. So now we'll move into item B1, and case number UPO-282, and CPO-323, site location 530 Morro Avenue. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chairman Luer, and good evening, fellow commissioners. The project before you this evening is the continued review of the construction of a single-family residence with an associated secondary dwelling unit at 530 Morro Avenue. It was originally heard at the March 7th Planning Commission hearing. As a refresher, the property is located within the R2PDS4 duplex residential zone with a planned development overlay and special design criteria. It's located outside of the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction, and it lies to the east of the Embarcadero, west of Main Street, south of Marina Street, and north of Anchor. Just very quickly, the proposal meets all of the development standards that are set forth in the zoning ordinance of the municipal code. This is a view of the existing vacant parcel, as it's viewed to the east from Morro Avenue. So before you this evening, with direction from, from Planning Commission, was looking at a redevelopment of the rear, or just a redesign of the rear elevation of the, of the proposed structure. So here is the previously proposed rear elevation. This is the newly proposed rear elevation. They've made the following revisions. They removed the double cornice from the roof, added an angular architectural projection to the center of the rear elevation that extends the full height of the structure, and they concentrated the use of corrugated metal in the center of the projection. The applicant also proposes to install a CMU, concrete masonry unit wall and planter in place of the previously proposed guardrail. This is the main floor plan that shows the planter area in angled projection, circled in red. And some updated elevations. You'll see the original proposal in that top-left corner, the proposed front elevation there as the larger image, and it's very similar. They changed some of the exterior cladding around to better fit with the proposed rear Updated north elevations. South elevations. Color and materials board. So just, just a note to staff, or a note to, to the public and the commissioners, the planter boxes on the bottom that are distressed and rusted-colored metal are on the front and sides of the, of the proposed structure. The planter area in the rear is concrete masonry, as discussed earlier. Photo simulations showing the newly proposed rear elevation. And then from the corner of Driftwood and Morro. Straight on from the front on Morro Avenue. And from slightly looking at an angle kind of to the northwest, seeing it there, rear elevation. So therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2517, which includes the findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Do, has anybody had any expert telecommunications? Okay. Do we have questions for staff?
Joan, was there any explanation given about the retaining the concrete block wall? The change?
For safety and aesthetic purposes. They had originally proposed a guardrail.
Uh huh.
Where is it? So it's a little more aesthetically pleasing, and it does provide a bit more safety, if you will.
That's all I have.
Richard? Any questions? Okay, at this point, we will open up public comment, would the applicant care to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Parker. I'm architect on the job assisting the Elsters with their, with their design. If we have any questions, myself and the clients are in the audience.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please state your name.
My name is Betty Winholtz. I know the Elsters, they're good people. This house is huge. I wasn't able to attend the meeting in March. I knew it was being continued. It's, it's beautiful, and I appreciate the new articulation, but, and I remember reading in the new staff report, Dr. Teff saying, "It's large, but it fits in with the other large buildings in the area." But those other buildings are offices, and they're condos, and I'm just saying, maybe it fits in, but I don't know if this is going to be a trend in that area. So I just want to register my concern.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Do we have any questions for the applicant, while the public comment is open?
I guess I would. The one, the one question I have is, the, can you explain that we now have three faces in terms of exterior expression around the perimeter? We've got the wood fence, we have the, the appearance of the garden wall in the front, which is the highly, you know, the, that's the metal-faced wall, and then we have the block wall. Why do we have so many materials? Is what I'm, I'm after.
Excuse me. We're trying to stay consistent, but we have the block wall on the back, because it's the parking lot for the commercial building, kind of just more as a shield for, for the back of the residence. The other three faces, we're keeping consistent with what had previously been proposed. But yeah, they switched to the block wall on the back, which we're still thinking similar coloring to the, to the front walls.
So you're looking at integrated color block?
Yeah. Try to have a color palette similar, but they just wanted to go concrete block there for that purpose.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Richard? No, I think, I think I'm good on this one, too. Okay, bringing it back up to the commission, do we have any, any comments?
No, I just, I just want to compliment the owner on taking our, our comments seriously, and I think the thing that if, if people missed the meeting before, this is one of the few buildings that we've seen proposed since I've been on any planning commission that has this kind of environmental ethic associated with it, the rainwater catchment, that's a significant part of the rear of the property below that block wall. We don't see this kind of care, and, and it's also not participating in a, a kind of architecture of images. It's very simple, straightforward kind of design. I think the work in the front was, was pretty strong before, and I think it still looks as if the, you know, they've taken care with that primary facade. We don't know what will happen in the lot behind here in years to come, but I think the facade is an improvement, and I don't, as long as you're telling me the palette of the block wall will, will be the darker, you know, kind of integrated masonry kind of tone that's, that seems to work with the, the wood and the, and the front image that you've got here, I'm, I'm pretty good with that. I just appreciate your care for seeing that the house is more than an object, that it's an organism, that has all these other systems associated with it, the way that comes forward.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go over what we did in the first meeting, but yeah, I had, you know, in your comments, I had issues with the massing of it, but as we discussed before, and I think that the, the, the applicant did a, did a good job in, in, in taking our suggestions. I appreciate the 3D rendering, and I get a sense, my, my feeling on it is that it's, it's, how can I say it? It's true, you know, that, you know, not trying to downsize, it's, it's representative of what's going to be there, and not trying to minimize it. The, the block wall in the back, I, I concur with, with my fellow Commissioner Lucas on the, the color palette with regards to that, and I feel that, you know, I, I actually think it's a good idea to have that there, from, just from a, from a safety standpoint, as you said before. So I, I think that this project coming back, I think, I think they did what, what they said they were going to do and took our suggestions.
I'll, you know, I'll follow suit on that, too, and I think that, I think it's a much tighter, you know, rendition on, on the facades and stuff, and it is, it's, it's going to be a large home. This is a large lot, and there's, you know, and there's, I think this is a place where, you know, where you can have the large homes. Not everything has to be a 650-square-foot house that, that, you know, nestles under a single tree, but, so I think we do need the, the mixture of, of sizes when they're, when they're appropriate. And my only, you know, my only concern, once again, was the, with the block, it's just introducing another material where you have, where you have such a strong palette already, especially with those front garden walls. Just a continuation of that would have been, I think would have been better, but that's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to quibble on, on that. I think you did a real strong, you followed what our suggestions were, you, you, I iterated the, the projections with varying materials and kept those true to each other. So it wasn't, you took the applied facade and gave it some reason and some rhythm, and, and I like that about this project. So if there's no further comment, do we have a motion?
I'll move we conditionally approve, it's not conditionally approved, is it?
Yeah.
I'll move we approve CPO 323 and conditional use permit UPO 282.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you call the, oh, well, at this point, do we have any, do we have any discussion on the, on the motion or the second? I'll just, I'll just say, I didn't say this before, but I'll just say, I really appreciate the, the, the integration of the renewable aspects and the sustainable aspects of this project, even, even so much as the gardening and the grounds that were, that were brought into this project, so that's the only discussion I would have. Can we call the question?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Right.
And Chairman Luer?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, guys, and so, there's no new business. We have a item that is a longstanding unfinished business, and this is the Project D1, the draft sign ordinance. So I believe Ryan is up for this. Do we have a staff report? Okay.
All right, so we have the long-awaited update to our sign ordinance. It's been more than a long time coming, and gone through a couple of different iterations due to some work of the Supreme Court. In any case, we've, it started in 2010, and we're almost finalized with it in 2017, so it's an incredibly long time. Ryan's been helping us out, you know, from the beginning of this update process. We worked closely also with, with Dr. Teft. He probably wrote about half, half of the rewrite was, was done, half to three-quarters was done by Dr. Teft, just fantastic piece of work by him, working with us, and certainly I miss him and his participation in the update. But we have Ryan, Ryan's, he's been doing the documentation, putting it all together for us. He's done a great job, and he's going to give the presentation to the Planning Commission this evening. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm excited to finally present this draft sign ordinance after, just working on it since July. So I'm going to go over some of the history of the ordinance, and then of the ordinance update process, and then some of the changes that are going to occur in the proposal, and then finally, some of the regulations in the ordinance. So as Scott said, in 2010, we started the process, we held three workshops in 2011, which basically signaled that we needed to revamp the entire ordinance. So I went through various meetings in 2012 and 2013 with Eric, the planning intern at the time, and we were directed by City Council to hold district-specific workshops in 2013, so we held those in 2013 and 2014. Unfortunately, after that, there was some staff turnover, so it kind of fell, fell in the, kind of on the back burner, and, and in that same time, there was that court ruling, which I'll go over, and then I started working on it in 2016. So that court case that came about in 2015 was a Supreme Court case, and it basically said that cities can't, can no longer regulate content, so they can regulate, you know, the type of sign, where the sign is located, design standards of the signs, but they can't regulate any content for First Amendment issues. standards of the signs, but they can't regulate any content for First Amendment issues. I just listed some examples of current regulations and the current ordinance that we have that wouldn't be allowed with this court ruling. So we went through the whole ordinance that was the 2013 draft in with the city attorney and made it compliant with the court case. Also because it was, it fell behind since 2013, we held some public meetings in August of 2017, and we received some input from business members. So we addressed those, some of the changes in the proposed draft. Some hotels mentioned issues with illumination time limits for signs. So we changed those to allow hotel establishments to have their lights turned on unless they're adjacent or within residential districts. They also mentioned that they utilize marquee signs. So we allowed those types of signs in lodging districts. And then they also had some issues, or they wanted neon signs, which was already allowed in the current draft. Some other comments we got was from gas station businesses having some, you know, government signs that they were required to have from various agencies, and also signs that educated the public on the height of the car wash, for instance. And we determined that those were addressed in exempt signs in the current ordinance, or in our proposed draft ordinance. One other major comment that we received is, in the proposal, we didn't allow internally-lit signs in the downtown or in Barcadero districts. There was a lot of pushback from business owners, and so we changed the regulations to allow internally-lit signs citywide. One of the attachments to the staff report has examples throughout town of externally-lit and internally-lit signs, just for your reference. And then we also had some comments on the time limits for signs. So we say that signs can only be turned on until 10:00 PM or until the business is closed. Some people made some comments that downtown is relatively dark at night, so we should allow signs to be kept on to light up the downtown, but also to, you know, advertise businesses for the next day. But staff determined that that should be addressed in some other policy, such as street lighting and whatnot, not commercial signage. So we left those regulations the same. And so, yeah, that led to the current draft that we have. And so I'm going to go over some of the major changes. This isn't an exhaustive list. The more exhaustive list is in the attachment B of the staff report. So one of the changes is sign districts. So the current ordinance regulates them based off zoning district, but this draft proposes sign districts, so in Barcadero, downtown, North Main, Quintana. And we also have regulations for residential lodging and industrial districts. Also, sign area, the calculations for sign area is based up of building frontage in the current ordinance. So this draft proposes a percentage of your building facade. Sign classification, so we had to change how signs were classified because of the court ruling. So we changed them from commercial and non-commercial to simply on-premise or off-premise signage. Prohibited signs, there was a long list of signs that were prohibited, which wasn't following the court ruling. So we changed that to have a performance standard section, which has a list of standards that all signs throughout the city have to follow. Sidewalk or A-frame signs, currently they're prohibited citywide. This, the proposed draft allows them in all districts except for the in Barcadero, and they have to apply for another type of permit to get a sidewalk sign. Exemptions, currently there are sign exemptions granted by planning commission. The current draft continues that, following that specific findings are made, and also that, you know, the sign is showing to enhance the area or is following with the current draft or the sign ordinance. Exempt signs, so similar to the prohibited signs, there was a list of signs that were exempt, which didn't follow the court ruling. So we narrowed that down to five signs, and we worked out with the city attorney that that was, that followed the court ruling. And so the five exempt signs are legal notice, government signs, historical markers, educational signs, and government-required signs. Violations, the current ordinance doesn't have any violation provisions.
Excuse me, Ryan?
Yeah.
You seem to be on attachment B, and I receive. Can you give me a round of applause? You have a copy of the document?
So the presentation doesn't have all of the lists on attachment B. I had it narrowed down to some of the major changes, just for time purposes in the presentation. But, yeah, the attachment is a more exhaustive list of the changes.
Right.
Yeah. So violations, so we now included a section on administrative fines for non-conforming signs or unpermitted signs or illegal signs, and also provisions for making, bringing the non-conforming signs into compliance with business license renewals or new businesses getting their business licenses. And then finally, formatting, so the current ordinance is in just in block paragraph format, and the proposed ordinance has, you know, more tables, it's easier to read, there's more illustrations for examples of what we're looking for with signs. So those are some of the major changes from the current ordinance to the proposed draft. And I'm going to go into some of the regulations and standards that are some of the major So the way the ordinance is set up in the beginning, it defines, it goes into definitions of the various sign types and illumination types, and then it goes into citywide standards. So each sign type has standards that have to be applied citywide. And then it goes into district-specific standards, because each of these districts are unique and have different purposes and different people that they're trying to advertise for. So the first district is the downtown district. This is the map of the downtown district. It's a combination of residential and visitor-serving businesses. It's oriented towards pedestrians, bicycles, and slower-moving automobiles. And kind of the business, the overall aesthetics of the downtown was kind of an organic development, lots of unique signs and unique businesses. So we have proposed design guidelines that facilitate, you know, continuing that, those signs. The in Barcadero district, this is the city's, you know, major visitor-serving district. It's predominantly pedestrian-oriented. So the design guidelines and sign standards in this district are geared towards pedestrian-oriented signage, as well as maintaining, you know, consistency with the waterfront master plan, and, yeah, inviting a more, you know, tourist-friendly signage. For the downtown and in Barcadero district, the proposed allowed signage would be 15% of the facade area. So the picture you see here is an actual representation of what 15% of a building facade looks like. For example, if a building is 10 by 10, there'd be allowed 15 square feet of signage, and that could be used towards a variety of sign types if they're allowed in that district. The Quintana district is the city's, you know, major commercial, it has some of the city's big commercial box stores. It's predominantly automobile-oriented. The topography of the area makes a lot of those businesses over there difficult to see from the roadway. So the design guidelines and standards in this district are geared towards those environmental And the North Main district is similar to the Quintana district in automobile orientation, but it also has, you know, a mix of residential and neighborhood commercial uses. So there's a little bit more pedestrian uses. So the design guidelines and standards are tailored towards that as well. And the Quintana and North Main district signage is 20% of the facade compared to 15% for downtown and in Barcadero. There are provisions in the ordinance to, for the secondary facade, so in buildings that, you know, have a facade that fronts on another public right-of-way, they have another allowed square footage amount for that front, or that facade area. This is just an example of the table in each of the districts. So in each of the districts, there's a sign standards table that has a list of the allowed sign types and also square footage allowances. Some of them have minimum and maximum regulations. The reason for that is in many, where we see that some businesses are putting up signs that are cluttered and small over their facade area, so this is trying to mitigate that issue. But this table is, you'll see this table in each of the sign, each of the sign districts. Another regulation that is changing is the sign bonuses. So this is a provision to allow for an increase in sign square footage if a business proposes a certain sign type with a certain quality. And so the reason for this regulation is to incentivize, you know, high-quality signage throughout the city. Another regulation that will be, that is different than the current ordinance is master sign programs. So for sites that have three or more commercial buildings, this ordinance would require them to submit a master sign program, which is similar to an individual sign permit, but it is a sign, it's a sign permit for the entire building and all the tenants. So the reason for this is to create a more organized and less cluttered atmosphere for buildings that have multiple tenants. And when businesses come in and apply for the master sign program, they're given additional sign allowances. And so the sign allowances is for additional signage on each of the major street frontages. So for instance, shopping centers would be allowed an additional monument or architectural sign on each major street frontage. And retail and professional offices would be allowed one additional monument or architecture sign. And this is for, you know, large commercial buildings that are setback from the public right-of-way to have a, you know, a sign on the street frontage to advertise, but also for businesses, especially in the in Barcadero, that have tenants in the rear of the property to have a more organized, a more organized way of advertising to people walking on the in Barcadero that they're, you know, in the rear of the property instead of placing illegal signs or signs that aren't permitted around the building. And then finally, the non-conforming sign section has provisions for an additional two types of non-conforming signs. So we have provisions for legal non-conforming signs, which would be signs that are, have sign permits now, but once this ordinance gets adopted, would no longer be following these regulations. Unpermitted signs, which are signs that follow these regulations but don't have a sign permit. And then illegal signs, which are signs that are, they don't follow these regulations and they also don't have a sign permit. So this current draft has provisions to bring each of these sign types into conformance. And it also suggests looking at whether each business has an approved sign permit with business license renewal. And that's our method of bringing the non-conforming signs throughout the city into compliance with this new adopted code. So I just wanted to go over some examples of what the ordinance is trying to avoid and promote. It's trying to avoid excessive signage in the in Barcadero specifically. There's lots of signs that are, create a cluster, disorganized atmosphere, and it's a little confusing to understand where businesses are located. It's also trying to avoid signs that appear manufactured and avoiding tall pole signs that line street corridors. These are just some examples of signs that the ordinance is trying to avoid. Specifically, the picture on the right, individually, maybe each of those signs would be, you know, okay, some of them might be too small in this proposed ordinance, but as a whole, it creates this disorganized atmosphere that, you know, visitors and even residents don't really know what to look at. So this is kind of what the ordinance is trying to avoid. And we're trying to promote artistically attractive signage and also, you know, an ordinance that's easily understood, and also a healthy business community, so businesses can have clear signage and clear communication to residents and visitors. These are just some examples of signs the ordinance would be promoting. So staff recommends during this time that you give us some feedback on the proposed ordinance. The next steps that we will be taking, we'll be doing a similar process with city council, getting feedback from them, and then this will be bundled in the zoning ordinance update in the future. One thing I wanted to mention that we realized in the introduction of the draft ordinance, it references general plan and LCP policies of the current general plan and local coastal plan. However, this, those are in the update, those are being updated right now, so I just wanted to put it on the record that we'll be, you know, changing those policies if those, when those general plan and LCP gets adopted.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
At this point, open for public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have questions for staff? Go ahead, Michael.
This is an amazing document. I especially like the visual examples that are in here. I think they're much clearer as to what the intent behind the text was. I really appreciate that. It's a lot of stuff to read through. I can't, I can't admit that I've looked at the whole thing. The two issues that come up in my mind, though, and I appreciate the discussion about the internally illuminated signs, but I think we have, there's two places that I'm really worried about, our obligation besides just to the business owners. And it's, it's the nature of the Route 1 corridor relative to the signs. You know, the Quintana Road issue is one thing, but what the town appears as you're going through on Route 1 is a bit of a concern for me. And I think as we get the harbor walk completed, I'm really concerned about what the harbor side looks like from the water. And I'm really concerned that the internally illuminated signs are probably most offensive, at least to my own personal aesthetic taste, when I think about seeing them from the water in the harbor. And because we've got so many people starting to anchor out there, because we've got more people walking on that side, I'm concerned about the accumulation of signs that face the harbor and that we not forget that that's kind of a, that's a really special thing. If we're going to have people walking all the way out to the rock and reflecting back on the city, that image can't necessarily be the same way we think about it as it faces the in Barcadero itself, which I think is a different issue. So it's almost like I'd rather see an effort, especially when you get to those multi-sided buildings, that we think about very intentionally what we want to have as that image of the city toward the waterfront, toward the water. Because I think if it ends up being the really high internally illuminated signs, it's going to be more of the Quintana. going to be more of the Quintana kind of effect out there. And I, I think it needs to be super subtle at the scale of the people walking and not try to appeal to boats coming in the harbor. I don't think we have anything that needs to do that, you know? So I'm just concerned that, I don't know if you can comment, if you've got that kind of thread in here. I wasn't necessarily seeing anything jump out overtly. I know there's a, there's a scale collision between the need to speak to traffic on Quintana to come in here, come up this ramp to get in here versus the one, versus the Route One experience. You know, it's, it's almost like you want the Route One experience to be very quiet. The Quintana can be as loud as it needs to be in some ways, but I just wondered if you had the harbor side thinking in here.
That's actually a great point and not one that the ordinance currently addresses, but would actually be fairly easy for us to address, I think. I, I mean, I don't, I think that's a pretty simple change to make. In fact, we weren't allowing illuminated signs up until we went out and talked to the business community and they kind of were like, wait, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, this is, you know, we, we need these. And they gave a lot of reasons for it. It was like, okay, well, you know, that's what we were hearing back from the business community, so we're okay with it. But I think that's an appropriate change to the sign ordinance to, to not allow illuminated signage like you speak about on the, on the, facing the waterfront. I mean, that's, that's actually a really good idea and not one that somebody's brought up to this point or one that internally we thought about. So I appreciate that. That's, that's great. Thank you.
Richard?
I, I agree completely with Commissioner Lurie that it's a perspective issue as you're coming in, you know, if you're on a boat, you know? And I, I lived on a boat in Maria del Rey, so it's kind of like one of those, you have a harbor, you want that kind of a peaceful look. The other, on a, on a flip side of that, and what, yeah, the, the document is pretty On the downtown, in where you, they talk about no internally lit signs and that's going to be citywide, right?
Well, no, that's where we were at before.
Yeah.
And then, and then we went back and changed it, but now we have limitations on, on the timing of the illumination, which is not past 10:00 PM or until the business closes, whichever is later. And we have the exception for the hotels because hotels are like, people coming to us all, all night long. We're pretty much open to business all day long.
Right.
And that actually rang true to us. I mean, yeah, you have your navigation thing on your car and you can probably find most of them, but, but I mean, you are looking for the sign when you get close, right? And so that actually was a pretty compelling argument to be made for them. But the other ones, I don't think if we have an illumination, if we have an illumination issue in our downtown at night, we don't solve it with signs. That's, that's a poor choice and it should be solved through appropriate lighting improvements, not, not internally illuminated signs. That seemed like a, not a great idea, maybe.
Okay. What I, what I look, what I'm looking at for me, you know, when I, you go through downtown, I, I feel that we need to, and maybe you're right, you know, maybe the sign thing isn't the way to do it, but maybe there is the opportunity there. There's a couple, couple of things that I, I want to, I want to address. And one of them is, is in the downtown area, I think that we could have some, take some creative license in taking, in doing signs downtown. Let me just ask Commissioner Lurie, is this going into discussion or is?
Yeah, well, what I want to do is I want to just do a quick, quick overview.
Overview, okay.
Then if you have specifics for the, for the text, and then we'll just keep it as kind of an open discussion.
Okay, okay. So I just, my, my thing is on the downtown, I think that we could take a little bit more liberty as far as looking at the different signage and internally lit signs for people to, you know, see what's open, okay?
Yeah, well, we would allow, I mean, if you're open, your sign's on.
Okay.
And that's the idea. The idea was that we have, at 10 o'clock, the signs go off.
Yeah.
I mean, our commercial areas are really narrow and they're abutted by residential areas.
Yeah.
And so, so the lighting was a concern when we were looking at it, what it could be. And we were kind of like, well, this is an issue that we see and, and we actually did some research through other ordinances and other cities have similar, you know, code requirements in them. And so that's where we came up with that and we said, well, if we have them, so they turn it off at 10 or they're open, I mean, if they're open until 12, then they're all thinking to have it off until 12 and then when they go home, they turn it off. That seemed appropriate to us just because it, I don't know why, I don't, I didn't think the idea would be we would light our downtown with signs. I mean, it just seemed kind of an odd concept, quite frankly, to us.
Okay. Well, one of the things that we were talking about in the downtown area is maybe the opportunity of having affordable housing residential in the upper floors, but still having a, the commercial. And, you know, how, how do you see something like that? Like, let's say a, like a bar downstairs and maybe a...
Well, I mean, I think, I think it needs to be respective, you know, the, the signs is proposing to be respective of what the use of the building is. And I think, you know, the policy kind of does that. At least you know that the lights aren't going to be on, unless the business is open 24 hours or you're next to a hotel, you know, it's not going to be, that sign's not going to be on all night.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if you're at the restaurant, the restaurant closes at 11, yeah, you're in the downtown, you can, if you live in the downtown, you're going to expect it to be noisier, so you have more people around and there might be a little more, you know, the, you know, issues related to that type of thing. And of course, you're in a commercial area, so you're going to have impacts from the commercial businesses that are hopefully open later than 5:00.
Right.
And so, yeah, I mean, that's some of the things we're trying to promote. I, I mean, that's, you're right. We were, we've talked about mixed use through the general plan and LCP update, trying to get more folks in the downtown so we don't roll up our sidewalks so early. Maybe they stay open a little bit, get a couple more nice restaurants in the downtown. I mean, that's, those are the things we're looking for, you know? Liven up the streetscape in the downtown, that's what we want. Yeah.
Okay. For my initial overview comments, you know, I really liked the, the changes, mostly the changes that were made. But I strongly oppose internally lit signs. If at all, I think they should be restricted to the industrial areas and not where they can be, they're exposed to the residential areas, for one thing. And the harbor front is a good, is, is a real good zone for that, for two reasons. On the internally, you know, internally lit signs, illuminated signs, for one thing, they can never meet the dark sky requirements that we're trying to propose. And I don't see any, any mention of that in the, in the document. And so I think that needs to be brought forward in the, in the, in the, in the purpose of the document, that this is, that's one of our stated goals is nighttime sky or dark sky requirements, what's the terminology that's presently?
Dark sky is good. Yeah, that's fine.
And so internally illuminated, illuminated signs cannot, the, the light cannot be directed. So by definition, it's, you know, it's 180 degrees from the point of source or 300, 300 degrees. And then the other thing is the glare cannot be controlled. So those are two, you know, we talk about controlling glare. How are you going to control a glare from a yellow internally lit sign that's, you know, that, that there's no screening on? You know, so, so we're at cross purposes. If we're going to say we're going to want one, then we can't allow the other. And just because the signs are cheap doesn't mean that we should approve them or we should promote them. So I don't think they have any place in the downtown. I don't think they have any place in the Embarcadero. They may have a place on Quintana, and I don't think they really have a place on North Moral Bay where, or Highway 41 where it works, where it's exposed to Route One. And those are where we're trying to attract customers for this town. And, and I knew that was going to be a big push by the business community because, you know, at one point we had, there was a sign company that came through and gave everybody deals. And all of a sudden, everybody had internally illuminated signs that didn't have them before because they were cheap and they gave them special deals. And so just because they're economical, I don't think that, that we should be pushed into approving them.
So, so thinking about the pushback that this is going to happen, you'll probably have the entire chamber sitting in the council, Chamber of Commerce folks sitting at the council chambers when we go there. I, I've seen ordinances that do allow internally illuminated signage for individual channelized letters. Would that be a compromise that would be more acceptable? Maybe it's not.
Yeah.
But it, but it doesn't have as many of these, it, it gets out some of the issues that you have, like the big yellow sign. I mean, it just, you have illumination from the letters, those are on the side of the building. There's only so much impact that would, that would potentially have, and it would reduce the light spill from the areas that don't have the sign wording on it, you know, that would otherwise be illuminated.
Yeah. That would be a compromise. The same thing could be handled by backlit, you know, plasma cut letters, much better. But, you know, those, we're talking about, we don't want manufactured signs. All of the internally lit signs are not craft signs. None of them are. So, you know, and that's my, you know, that's one of the big...
I, I, we, we didn't, we prohibited them in the ordinance for a reason.
Right.
We also feel that they're not the most attractive things in the world. The pushback from the business community was consistent. They're like, hey, we have to be able to have these. The other signs that you're talking about are very expensive, you know, and they're $5,000 and $10,000 and we don't have that kind of money. And so we were like, okay, well, so we lightened up on it as a result of getting input from them, you know? The sign ordinance needs to function for the community and needs to function for the business community as well. So oftentimes, there are going to be compromises, you know, along those lines. So I think it's, I think the point that you made about the, the potentially compromises, channelized letters and/or the backlit, you know, cutout ones, that, those were ones I actually brought up at the last sign meeting that we had. And some of them were like, those are super expensive. And I was like, okay.
Well, everything's going to be more expensive than an internally lit plastic sign.
Correct.
Everything is.
Well, and those, and those internally lit plastic signs stay forever because all you got to do is change out the plastic once you have the sign. So once you have them, they don't go away.
Yeah.
My experience.
So those are my overall general, you know, comments. Do you have anything? Then I've got a list of specifics.
Okay.
I don't have anything especially specific except that the other, the other thing that I've kind of noticed is with the tightening up of the energy criteria on buildings, we're starting to see a higher amount of reflectivity in the, in the glass itself. I think the, the new evening venue downtown has especially dark glass. And I think what we, what we need to also think about is, is how that transparency at the pedestrian experience actually helps all of the retail. So if we can get things in the downtown kind of streetscape thinking such that we introduce three-dimensional shading devices to then keep the glass itself from having to take on all the burden of shading, you end up with more transparency in the sidewalk. I'm concerned that in, we're going to see more of the illuminated kind of sign because you're going to need the illumination to have the sign be seen through the glass. That's going to be kind of more reflective from the exterior. So that was one point. And, and I just, I just agree with Commissioner Lurie. I, it, it's my own personal aesthetic. Most of those signs are, are not the kind of establishment that anybody's going to, I mean, I can understand the hotel and the gas station. And I know that when we get our large chain evening food venue down on 41 at Route One, we're going to see large signs. But I, I think there's something, when you get out of the car and you're walking the streetscape, there isn't a need for those things. These other, these other things, the indirect lighting, I think there's a lot of kind of, the dark sky thing, I think is just one aspect of, of the unintended consequences. You know, Commissioner Sodowsky is talking about the, the impact on the residential ones. I'm not complaining at all. I, I love Spencer's, but from my home, Spencer's neon sign is lighted uphill as well as out to, and, and quite frankly, it's kind of phallic looking, you know?
Fantastic.
And I'm sure that was not intended, but if my guests are in the home and they look out there, they, they wonder what, what adult store that is. So I'm, I'm just saying that there are these tertiary impacts that we're not necessarily considering when we're thinking only about the frontal aspect of the way the sign appears. And, and so I'd just be very cautious of that. I want, I want the businesses to feel they've got opportunity. The sign, then, the sign ordinance is probably one of the easier things to change over time. If we have more traffic, you'll be less pressure for the cheap signs. So that, those are just my comments on...
Okay. Richard? Anything else to add?
No.
Okay. Well, let me, let me roll through this and I'll try, I'll try to be as brief as possible. No, I'm, I'm going through the specific comments on, you know, on wording and, and, you know? Okay, on page three, the staff report on your, your table. Okay, where, where the staff action for allowing internally lit signs, you know, I have, those comments cannot be dark sky, you know, compliant or, or you cannot control the glare on it. The next item down is on, I wasn't, I wasn't sure because of the definitions of stuff. It says to allow marquee signs in the lodging district. Now, are those digital moving or moving LED signs or those banned?
Those types of signs are prohibited.
Okay. So these are individually lettered replacements or?
Yeah.
You know, okay.
Like the one that says, you know?
No vacancy.
Or, or you put in there and it says, you know, happy anniversary, Jerry Lurie.
Yeah. Welcome, welcome Car Club.
Exactly.
Those things are great.
Those types of things.
Okay. And then allow marquee, and the next item down, allow marquee signs in lodging district with a minimum size of 10 square feet and no maximum size restriction? So why is there no maximum size restrictions on marquee signs?
Well, it'd still be required to meet their, you know, total sign square footage allowance, but we don't like have a specific maximum size for, for marquee signs.
Okay. The way it reads, it's, it's giving you carte blanche on that point.
When you're in the sign section, it's clear that you have an allocated amount of signage for your business and then you can allocate it, there's a whole bunch of allowed signs. You can't have them all. You can only have 200 square feet of them all. And so if you want one of them to be a marquee sign, then however many square feet that is, it takes it out of the total.
Okay. Just as long as it, it's covered.
Yeah. It's, we have the maximum totals and with, and then some, we have some incentives that gives you more if you...
And I think the zoning, the zones are fine, you know? And if anybody wants to jump in on any of my comments, feel free to. And then the, the, the time limits, you know, also in the staff report on non-conforming signs, I think that was good, that was a great idea and I, I think that's a good way to, to approach it, you know, other than giving just a, you know, set timeline for various signs to, to be replaced, you know, giving them a more proration on, on how much the cost would be, I think is a good, good compromise.
Let me think, go back to the districts. The one thing I noticed is we've got a couple outlier conditions on the, on the downtown business district. There's like one isolated parcel to the south and then there's the, what I'm guessing is the state, is the hotel down on the state park. But is, is the assumption that if a, if a, if a use changes, that they automatically fall into the, in other words, if somebody in the residential zone outside of the business district all of a sudden has a lot use change, do they automatically get into the business signage or are they, are they, do they, is there some kind of compromise? I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking about is the situation where someone in the residential district assumes that residential lot is going to be protected by residential sign capabilities. But if somebody manages to put a live work unit or something in there and gets a business associated with it, maybe it has to come through here. Does that automatically default into the business signage zone all of a sudden of, you know, the isolated outlier?
Well, we, we have, we have residential signage component to the ordinance. It deals with residential signage and residential zones. And so if you're not in the commercial zone, you're in the residential zone, that's the only type of signage you get. Would they go through a discretionary process through the planning commission to do something special that maybe we, you know, that reflects a policy that we've yet to develop because we don't have that right now? Not to say that it, that's not coming, it could, because we talked about mixed use. And so if it didn't do that, then either we'd be looking at amending the code and incorporating that area into it and then being able to accommodate it through the discretionary process that the planning commission has for these. So I think it'd be a combination of those things. I mean, again, we might be done, when we might get done with the general plan, LCP and zoning code update, we might be making changes to this, which is why we're doing it all at one time, because coastal doesn't... it all at one time, because Coastal doesn't want us to keep like, you know, making a bunch of changes over time. So we're going to package it all when we're done. So you'll get to see this again, is the, is the point there too, so.
Let me just ask, the most outrageous scenario I can come up with. Only, only because I was scanning our, our brothers and sisters at the Slow City and Slow County for an academic reason today. And I was noticing a plethora, and by that I mean bucket full, I could use other words, of, of, of the wireless things. Somebody who has something like, let's say AT&T, just because they have something in the right of way, doesn't give them permission and it's a business use, commercial use to, to tag it as a little sign for their network or things like that.
No.
That's all things in the right of way that are...
Yeah, they're not, they're not, they wouldn't, they're not, they wouldn't meet the definition of a business.
Okay.
Or storefront, that type of thing. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't fall underneath like the storefront requirements for signage and things like that, so they wouldn't be able to do that.
Default to Commissioner Lor.
Okay. Moving on to attachment A, I'm just going to kind of roll through some of the things that just poked up at me here. So on the, on purpose 1768.010, the internally lit sign violates almost every one of the purposes that we were proposing there, all except for encouraging communication. So that's, those are my arguments for non-internally lit signs. Okay, rolling, rolling through, page number four. Page number four of the attachment A. And this is temporary signs, I'm sure this is, once again, this is my pet, my pet peeve. And if there's a way, you know, that we can, I know we can't control content, but maybe we can control, we can require, you know, consequences of going out of business sale signs. So if somebody advertises going out of business, you know, maybe we, you know, what I'd like to see is maybe we give them 60 days to go out of business and at that point, they have to come back and apply for a new CUP and a new business license. So that we're not regulating the content, but...
But I think we're, I think we're covered. We have, we have banners that they could use and they're only allowed for, I think, 30 days. So that's it. I mean, like literally they put their going out of business sale up, 30 days and they're done. So we're like, hey, take it down. That's it, they're done. So we're covered, I think we're covered there.
We're covered there on that?
Yeah, I mean, so it's, we have specific time limits on those types of things. They do, I think they, we do allow them, but once you're past that timeframe, then you gotta take it down. So if you're not out of business then, well, tough. Then you go back to being a...
And when, when could they put it back up? Could they start a new one in the next day?
No, it's a no individual temporary sign may be displayed more than 30 days in any calendar year.
In any calendar year, okay.
So I guess technically they can put it up in maybe December and then have it.
But then you only get, still only get it for two months, so it's, you know, it's...
Okay, great, that's, that's a better work through than what I was...
Some of the conversations we had putting these together, we had some interesting, interesting conversations between the three of us, myself and Ryan and Dr. Zuff, going through these things.
We've had a couple of businesses here that have been going out of business for 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, Richard?
Since we're on this subject, yeah, like A-frame sign, right? That's temporary, right? There's a, I'll give you an example where it is ridiculous. Right there at Quintana in Maine, okay? How many puts a sign right there? That comes right off a bike route, okay? And I think that those are kind of things, you know, when it starts affecting public health and safety, then that's not, that's just not common sense.
It's, it's one of the reasons we have very, I mean, we have some of the strongest regulations in here for bringing businesses into compliance that you'll see in an ordinance in here.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of enforcement to this point.
Right.
And we have a lot of businesses that are way out of compliance. And our idea here is, you know, one of the issues that's been brought up this entire general plan LCP update is we need to look better.
Right, yes.
We have places that don't look good. They don't look good out to the public and the visitors and they don't look good to the residents that live here. And some of the, and that's related to the signage and some of those issues. So it's, it's a good point, it's well taken and it's one of the reasons we have strong policies in here to clean those things up as business licenses are renewed and they're renewed yearly. So we'll be reviewing them and going through it and making sure that everybody is compliant and has sign permits for all their signs. It's going to be a lot of work, but I think it'll clean up the city quite a bit and we'll look a lot nicer when we're done. And hopefully, you know, that brings about what folks have been complaining about for the entire interplan update process is we need to, we should, we have a really nice town, we should respect that and, and, and look nicer. And so that's a lot of what we've, the comments that we got from the public.
And one of, one of the corollaries of that is if it's, you know, if it's more aesthetically pleasing, you're going to get better customers. And that kind of gets, you know, as a business owner, I know that gets lost in the day to day of trying to, to make your, to make your not, quote unquote. But that's what we should, that's, that's what we should be striving for.
Well, like an open house, for instance, somebody's having an open house and stuff, these are the kind of things, oh, it's only for the weekend, but you know what? It's a public hazard, so.
Well, and so, and so we do, we would do specialized permits for like outdoor sales and stuff like that. I mean, we're, I think we have an allowance in here to have, or did we pull it out of here?
Outdoor display?
We pulled it out?
For the outdoor display?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was working on an outdoor display ordinance and we decided it would be better to be separate.
Incorporated into the zoning code type thing for it, because it made sense, because we were talking about signage and like, oh, this is one of the issues we have. You hit the nail on the head. But we're going to regulate it out of the zoning code from a use standpoint, because we were, when they're going to come in, we're probably going to have a permit that we issue and says, hey, you need to maintain your, your, you know, four or five feet of walkway in front of it. You can occupy this much space, you need an encroachment permit and it's this much, and you have it for this much time and that's it, so, yeah.
Okay, page number six. With legacy signs, you know, paragraph D. The way I read that and tell, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, is they go to the city council on this. It seems to, that should be brought to, to create the legacy signs, it seems like it should be brought to the planning commission first. Or instead of, with an appeals process to the, to the city council.
So, yeah. So I think the, the idea would be that, that maybe we would get recommendations for council. I mean, because this is, I think we basically develop a list of these and it could be outside of this and I think it probably would come through here to go to, go to city council for, you know, the final, say it's okay, type thing. I mean, and if the planning commission wants it to stop here, we could, I suppose. It's just, so what we normally do is it's, it's kind of like, example, when I was in Pismo, we had a list of historic signs that we determined were historic. And so we had pictures of all of them in the LCP and we just said, here they are. So those were recommendations that went through planning commission and the council approved it. I think we were thinking kind of along those lines, probably because it was a process I followed previously, but maybe a little dissimilar. I, I don't have a headache one way or the other. If you guys wanted to live with you, I'd be okay with that too. And maybe the council doesn't really care about it, I don't know.
It just seems like it should go through us first.
I agree with that. I think, I think they would want, because this is land use related, they would want the planning commission's input. So I think we would do that regardless. We can, we can tighten the language on that though.
If it's an easy one, it doesn't hurt to go through us. If it's a hard one, it's better to go through us first.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay. Next page, page seven. Under number seven, LED there. I, I think we need, you know, I was just saying, we need to have some consideration for future lighting types, because we're already moving into OLEDs and there's going to, you know, I'm hearing rumor of phosphor, you know, phosphorus plasma lights that are even going to be more efficient. So just some forward thinking on the, on the wording to allow...
So you're thinking that we have a more include, we have LEDs and some other lights that might be similar?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's actually going to be more, more efficient lightings coming down the, down the pike.
What are those blue ones that, like you see, you know, headlights that?
Those are LEDs.
Sodium or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the phosphorus.
For the blue?
Yep.
This is just me, I...
Category that would include them too.
Yeah, they're going to, whatever it's going to be is going to be on color spectrum, but I think we just have to be able to just have, you know, have it a little bit opened in it on higher efficiency that's coming in the future.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do some research and come up with something that's more inclusive than mechanics, yeah.
High efficiency is one thing, but the other thing is, is the frequency of the light, you know, there's certain lighting is literally blinding, so we have to have a balance there.
We, we have some limitations that apply to how bright, how bright the signs are, the lighting that we're doing, too, yeah.
There may be something that we might want to put in as far as, there's, there's the CRI index, you know, where color, color rendition index that it needs to follow, you know, that it should be balanced, you know, in 85, 85% or more or something like that or, you know, on, you know, on the externally illuminated, if we go with internally illuminated, whatever the color of the plastic is. But we should have a balanced pleasing light.
I don't know what our, the Kelvin range of our streetlights is that came out. They're, they're, they're sort of on the blue. And I don't know if that's like 4,000 or what it is. It seems like the, they're, they're a little too yellow if they're down in the low Kelvin range and then they, they kind of get into something that's sort of balanced and then you get, get really super white, blue up there.
That's a 5,000.
Yeah, yeah.
5,000 degrees.
I always, I always feel bad for these folks that, I see some renovations up where, Commissioner Lor and I live, where, where some people came in and changed out the exterior and, and it looks like the men's colony. It's like they're 4,500 or something Kelvin. It's, it's like, wow, it's really blue. They didn't understand that. So I think we should be looking at maybe suggesting a range that's, that's in that middle zone and getting away from the blues and the, because that sodium range is, I don't know when that era was, that was the public lighting de jour that was efficient. That's, that's really scary parking garage kind of coloration.
Yeah, the, the better lighting for visibility usually runs from like on the low side, 2,700 Kelvin and on the high side, you know, I don't like to go above 3,500, you know, but if you get, you know, the 4,000 is when you're starting to get into fluorescent lighting and stuff, so.
And the nice thing about the Kelvin is that's a stable index.
Right.
That's...
Well, you have CRI and you have Kelvin and then you have lumens, you know, so those are the, the photometric measurements. So maybe we need to have some kind of a standard in there that's appropriate for those, for that illumination.
So on page 40 is the performance standard section, so it's, all signs have to follow these standards, so there's an illumination section. So we'll go through and see if we can, see if there's not something that already covers it or some...
There are some requirements in this, if you look at page 40D.
Yeah, 40.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see anything in CRI or...
Yeah.
Or lumens, but I think that would be a great place to put it, so. And I'm sure other cities have, might have that specified.
We've, we've sampled liberally for our ordinance. I mean, we found issues that we ran into that we had here and we wanted to solve them and we wouldn't want to just make it up on our own, so we went around and sampled other ordinance just to see what was out there. We did that sort of again liberally.
You know, the great artist steal. Good artists borrow, great artists steal. Page 11, I have, you know, yeah, so page, page 11 on the, on the draft. Oh, okay. No, no, that's what this is.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go to page nine, okay? And that section is the computation of sign area. Years ago in your old stomping grounds in Pismo, I had to go to a planning, a city council meeting for my sign and what it had to do is it was a three dimensional sign. And it was basically a huge hand and then I put in a flower pot and made an espresso cup out of it and it stuck out, it was right next to Harry's, okay? And, and put foam on top. And I had to go there because one of the sign ordinances, it was a three dimensional sign and the sign ordinance said, you know, you can't have statues. So I had to go get a definition of a statue and stuff. How, how, out of three, what I'm getting at is this community, our, our community, yeah, is commercial fishing, but we also have a huge artesian, you know, artist. And to have that creative license so we can have some uniqueness to it, kind of like what, an area that comes to my mind is like Melrose Avenue over there in LA, okay? You know, where, you know, people, you know, did all kinds of stuff with their buildings too, you know? How would, how would, would, in this ordinance, would that be addressed? Just, I'm, at a curiosity.
Like if there was a statue holding a sign or?
Well, you know, you would have a three dimensional sign. If somebody wants to take some creative liberty and come up with a, a sign for their business, would, you know, would, would it be considered like a sign bonus area where you would get like, it'd be considered and have to be reviewed in the planning commission or would it be something that staff could look at and address it at that level? I'm just trying to get a feedback on how...
It could be both. And we have requirements in here for three dimensional signage and there's a parameter for basically incorporating it into a triangular type box and creating faces and then calculating what that is.
Okay.
And then that would be the allowed signage. If it didn't fit into that, but it still seemed like it made sense, we have parameters that allow the planning commission to discretion to approve things that are maybe, that we didn't think of. And so then it could go through that process.
Okay.
I mean, because you probably, probably can't think of every scenario.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm just like, you're leaving people a little creative license to...
Yeah. Okay. We're good, but we're not. I see it. Okay, and then moving on to page 11. On the computation of the facades, on the facade heights and stuff, it's, to me, it's not clear that the gable is, whether it's represented in that or not represented in that. So maybe some witness lines on those dimensions showing that it's the, you know, or maybe the gable is included in that. Okay. So it's the base height of the building, I think, I think a couple of witness lines across there for, to the dimensions would make that a little bit clearer.
Yeah, I could draw like a red box or something, make it more clear.
Well, just, you know, what they call witness lines on the dimensions.
Right, you draw the thing, draw it like that, yeah.
So, okay, okay. And maybe even, you know, put on the, in the gable, not included.
That's probably better, we might as well be explicit. I like explicit.
Yeah.
Fewer questions I have to answer.
Because if it's a, if it's a part of the facade that's, that's flush with the lower level, you are counting it, but you're not counting roof profile that's a hip going back.
Yeah.
So you have to be clear about that. And I just want to, I just want to make sure, my understanding is you can't transfer rights of square footage from one side to another.
No, you have explicit square footages for each one.
Okay, because some of these businesses that I'm thinking of on the Embarcadero, they might have three orientations, you know, and now all of a sudden, it's, it's facade by facade, not any accumulation, I'm going to move this group over to the front.
Yeah, our, our intention for, for some of the, so we talked, it's sort of like for some of the Embarcadero folks that have their businesses in the back and that type of thing was to come up with that standalone signage that's the, for lack of a better term, the monument sign for that building that has the, hey, this business is in the back, as opposed to them pulling them out front. It's confusing too, when you put a sign for a business out in the front, doesn't tell you where it's at and you're like, I don't see it. And so it's, it's better to have like a more of a directional type signage thing that points you, you know, where to go to find it.
So let's, let's clarify that gable end. If it's part, if it's in the same... So let's, let's clarify that gable end, if it's part, if it's in the same plane as the lower part of the structure, is it counted in the computation or is it not counted?
So it could be.
So as for square footage, so I think we just need to make that clear if we're doing it one way or the other, if it's a hip roof that projects back, then it definitely shouldn't be counted, or a mansard roof definitely shouldn't be counted.
Let me throw another scenario out there where we've got the, the, let's say we've got a, an inset of a balcony or something like that, that an upper floor has a, has like a, a set of doors or something, does that count toward the facade down below? Or did, once we get past the cornice line of the business use of the building, the upper floor, even if it's a rental hotel or something like that, we're not counting the face of a, of a deck inset or something.
We're counting the business face.
Okay.
That might be good to clarify too, if it's a multi, multi, multi-use building, then they may be looking for the second story that's residential to add to their sign, okay, sign computation. Okay, so on, are you guys good with that still? Okay, on the computation of the area, okay, and then page twelve, I think you might have already answered this about yard, you know, location of the signs and off-premise signs. Are yard slash garage sale signs included in this or how are we gonna handle those?
Those would be considered off-premise.
Off-premise?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't allow them.
Pardon?
We don't allow them.
Okay.
Off-premise signs.
And what, what about, you know, autos for sale that, you know, we, we have a ongoing used car lot on Highway forty-one there on that frontage road? How, how's that handled in this?
We have a section in performance standards that deals with vehicle displays, so try to think of everything.
So we, yeah, we could apply it, that's right.
So the attorney said we had to mention, you know, some of the vehicle codes, the state vehicle code, so we have those footnoted, um, it's on page forty-one, number K.
Brings back all the conversations.
Signs advertising such vehicle trailer boat for sale in locations where sale of vehicles is permitted, so, um, so technically that would not be allowed with this ordinance.
Okay. Going to the sign districts, that's fine.
I just want to say that I really liked the sign districts, that's, that's, that's smart.
All the business people really liked it too, they thought that made a lot of sense, they're like, ah, this is perfect, I mean, that, that was probably the, you know, least controversial piece of the whole thing.
Then on page twenty-two, below C, in the second paragraph on that, it says, "A few remaining historical signs in the downtown are blend seamlessly with new signage and add visual character to the streetscape." So there's just some wording there that-
Got it.
And there are some great signs in this town.
We have, we have a lot of, that was, one of the things we constantly would talk to each other about when we were going through this, because we have some pretty cool, cool and unique signs, especially in the downtown area, I mean, it's just, yeah, unique stuff.
When we, when we did the waterfront work, I think, I think it was GAFCO brought their project forward and we actually had some discussion about the existing sign on top of the roof, which I thought, I think that's one of our great legacy signs, but is that something that's allowed? That's one where it's on the peak of the roof that they decided to put it, are we allowing anything in that type of location anymore? My sense was from the way everything was written when we reviewed that way back when, that that was something that didn't conform to the current sign adventure that we had going. And, and we had to actually make that part of that package that we accepted that.
Minor sign? Yeah, that was a, I don't even think it was allowed under the old sign ordinance.
It's not under the old, the sign is prohibited.
Yeah.
Or the existing one.
But that's something that someone could bring forward if they had a, some design reason to suggest something like that.
We had a similar situation with Lavco.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yes, they could, so unique, so we do have the provision here that allows for the unique, I mean, we, we've had this conversation related to many things, as far as the, you know, going through the, the, uh, design guidelines for the, for single family homes and stuff, and so we carried that sort of concept through to it. Like if there's something really unique, we, the ordinance needs to accommodate it and it does allow that, but I think in general it's prohibited.
Page fifteen, so the table one standards for all districts. So it has provisions for rooftop signs. Right now they're only allowed in the Embarcadero. Top of, top of sign may not extend above maximum building height for the zone, medical, minimum vertical separation between the top of the sign and the top of the mansard roof should be eight inches, or shall be eight inches.
Okay, then on, you know, on page twenty-eight, we've got the pictures of a lot of the signs and some of those would be allowed now, some of them wouldn't. One of the things I was confused about was, okay, we, if you look at Cypress Plaza, you know, the Albertson's Rite Aid, it seemed like those, the signage for that district was eight foot maximum on height, is, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So those signs would be non-conforming. So the monument signs would be, would be maximum at eight foot height.
Correct, or it would be, it's lower than this, than their monument side that they have, yeah.
Twenty-five foot high or something.
Yeah. So these are just, you know, pictures of existing signs to show, you know, the aesthetics of the, the area, not necessarily to show what-
What would be allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's, I mean, it would be made legal non-conforming although, but it was, you know, because it was approved as part of the, the shopping center.
Yeah, the, um, a couple of the signs wouldn't be, you know, allowed if they came, came through to get a permit with, with this ordinance. Todd's Garage probably is too tall and be considered a pole sign. Yeah, and then Mortuary would be too tall as well.
Now, okay, in their definition of pole signs, it's further down, but it said pole, you know, if there's two poles or three poles, is, does that become an architectural sign or is that still a pole sign?
Architectural sign is technically, it has, you know, two poles on either side, similar to the one, the mortuary sign here. Yeah, and should be, should be pretty explicit in the definitions in the beginning of what an architectural sign is and a pole sign. I'll double check.
Okay, then, um, you know, one of my notes on page thirty-nine was just-
What page?
It was thirty-nine, I don't think it had anything, any correlation to what was there, it was just when I thought of it while I was reading there. We have the seasonal sign, the temporary signs for, that pop up for like art in the park, for, you know, eastern, Easter services, for surf meets, for various things that we see, you know, either staked out at the dog, at the, you know, the dog beach or on chain length fences, different places, how are those handled in this ordinance?
So for art in the park, for instance, that would be a government, that would be an exempt sign because it's a government, government. There's five different types of exempt signs, so that would fall under one of those, as for private events, it would fall under a temporary sign, so it would have to fall under the square footage requirements and the time limits.
Okay. And if they stake it out on a, or zip tie it to a chain length fence, then is, they would need to come in and get a permit and get permission from the, from the landowner to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, so like, like the Easter at the Rock, those would be something you'd have to go to the planning department and then-
And you get a temporary sign permit.
And wherever you want to put it.
It's not even a permit, it's, you can just have them for thirty days, yeah, you're, you're allowed to have, we, we tried to, there's a lot of those things in town and we realized that and we said, okay, as long as you're complying with our ordinance, you know, so the issue would come up, it's like, hey, that sign's all tattered and torn, it's been up there for three months.
Right, 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 right.
You know, then we could go, hey, no, it's gotta be taken down, it's been up there for too long, correct, I mean, that type of thing, so.
Yeah, temporary signs don't require a sign permit, so they just have to follow the size and time limit specifications.
One of the things that was just mentioned is, um, the, the idea of the fence as a location for a sign and, and I don't think we have that culture with the high school that I'm aware of. I know the junior high in Los Osos is, to me, just is one of the most ghastly things in the world, they, they probably have hundreds of feet of signs taped up there, I just think that looks awful. And so we have to be able to have something that that corridor on Route One where we've got fences like that, they're not part of our city property, but does, do we cover what the high school can do theoretically on, on their fence?
They would be subject to our sign ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, and, I mean, so a lot of times, like what you see, you know, like running along the whole Highway One corridor, there's all the Caltrans fencing that's there and people tax up to that.
If there's Caltrans.
Yeah, well, the best part is we call, we call it Caltrans and then they go out there and remove it. Because we don't, we don't touch their stuff, we're like, alright, hands off, but they're usually pretty quick and you can actually, they have a service request thing, you can just go on, you know, go online and do it, so it's kind of nice.
I, I'm surprised there really aren't more here, you know, there's-
We, normally the banner stuff are the ones that, that go up that we get a lot of complaints on, and so when they, when they go up, if we're, they're not permitted, or something's not supposed to be there, we find out pretty quickly and then, so we don't have a whole bunch of them around, because typically they're brought to our attention fairly quickly.
Now, in one of the sign meetings, there was a discussion of the, not, they're not, they're kind of a vertical banner, what are they called, leaf signs?
Blade signs?
Pardon?
The blade signs.
Blade signs and stuff, there was a big push to get those allowed on Quintana, where, as far as my reading of this, those weren't allowed, correct?
Yeah, they're terrible and they don't maintain them and they look awful.
Wound up in the street or bicyclists.
Well, and you need, and then they'll leave them out there and you can't even read them, you know, over time, you know, they fade pretty quickly because they're made out of cheap material, it's just not a good look.
Yeah, good, okay, and then on page forty-three, just in, on maintenance, they're talking about signs shall be kept free of rust, dirt and free of chipped, cracked or peeling paint. Well, okay, rust in a fishing village is kind of the natural surface finish for, for most metals or turns to that, so is there any way we can word that so that, and then also, when you've got Corten steel, it's, it's rust.
Which, which I think is, okay, I think the intent behind here is just to deal with maintenance of signs, if the sign is not in good shape, then we can go get it, and these are a list of things that would lead you to believe that the sign is not in good shape, I mean, if it's intended to look a certain way, then that's different.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, you are somewhat reasonable.
Yeah, yeah. Just bringing these things up that came to my-
Fair enough, that's good, these are, these are all good questions, so far this has been pretty good, I, we missed too much, I was like, that's, that's good.
No, I was surprised it was actually pretty well.
The, the first time we did this, I don't know if I told you this, the first time we ran this through like myself, at Dr. Teft, Ryan, we, I got, got done, we made all the changes to it, we went through it, met three or four times, like, aye, we're ready to go, you know, we're good to go, let's send it off to the city attorney's office. And we were thinking, ah, there's not gonna be any, I mean, there's maybe a couple, you know, whatever, send it off, there'll be ninety-four changes back. I was crushed. So, anyway. Yeah, 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 and that was all just, you know, trying to bring it into compliance with mostly the court case, Supreme Court case, wow.
Then, moving on to page forty-four. There's a list of, you know, when, you know, non-conforming or, or illegal signs are brought into compliance. And I didn't see that, that a non-conforming sign should be brought into compliance when a new business is issued, a new business license or CUP, is that, did I misread that or is that in there?
That's in the sign permit section, so.
Okay, we might want to have some mention of that in, in the non-conforming, unpermitted and illegal sign section, just to reiterate that.
Yeah, we can do like a cross, cross-reference or something.
Yeah. Because that's where most people would go to look for it.
Right.
You know, I think.
Jerry, maybe, so I'm operationally clear, we, I can't remember the business, but there was a pole sign that we looked at.
It was down on the Embarcadero.
Yeah, now, yeah, so with this ordinance then, it's like, okay, if the guy sold his business, is that, that sign would have to go?
Well, yeah, I mean, not, not dissimilar, like I, when we bought that project back before, yeah, my recommendation was to remove it and so it went, they didn't like that and they complained to the council, because the planning commission approved its removal. And they went to city council, the city council, yeah, it needs to be removed, it doesn't belong down there, it doesn't serve a purpose, you know, it's, pole signage down on the Embarcadero makes very little sense, you know, it's, it's, I think Ryan pointed this out in the beginning, it's, it's more pedestrian oriented, or you're driving really slow in cars, but you're, I mean, you're not looking around all that, so you're, you're walking along, so you need signage that's down at the pedestrian level. A big pole sign sticking way up there with a whole bunch of small text on it, you can't even read it, so, I mean.
Maybe, I'm thinking of a different one.
The Gray's, Gray's Motel was another one too.
That's what it was, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I'm sorry, that was, that was the one, now something like that, if they, that was a pole sign, yeah?
It was, it was a pole sign, but the, yeah, and that ended up having to be removed because it was in the way.
It was in the parking space.
It was in the parking space and so I'd be moved and so they were gonna take the sign and put it on the building and we haven't come back with it.
Okay, so then they removed the, so the pole sign's gone.
Yes, okay, okay, yeah, they were reconfiguring the entire, it had issues with ADA and, you know, they, they were redoing and restriping the thing and we're like, hey, you have to make an ADA space, they're like, no, we don't have to do that, I was like, no, you can't reconfigure the space without being compliant. So all, moving all that spaces around required the removal of the pole, so they had, so it was wide enough so they could at least have two spaces there, I think, with the ADA space.
Okay, so operationally, as the, as, as businesses change hands and stuff, these kind of non-conforming things are gonna be addressed and?
We'll be looking at them depending on what they are, really what the business license thing is meant to do is to pick up the illegal signage that we have or make people come in and get it permitted, so like, you know, the, the business license will come in for renewal, we'll review it, we'll go into the file and say, okay, what do they have for permitted signs? There'll be nothing in there and, I'm not kidding, and so we'll have to bring them through a process where they get their signs permitted and bring them into compliance, then we'll have one that's compliant and we'll all go down, down the road. I mean, it's, like I said, it's gonna be a lot of, it's gonna be kind of labor intensive on the part of the planning department to do it, but if we're gonna be serious about making the town look better aesthetically, which I believe is where the community's at, then this is one of the things you have to do, and so you just kind of gotta suck it up and make it happen, so.
And then I think this, my next point here is on page forty-six with the, uh, item number two. And can you just explain that whole, I think for everybody, that whole process of how we get rid of, you know, non-illegal signs or, you know, non-compliant signs?
Yeah, so it basically depends on the cost of replacing that sign, so if it's an expensive ordeal, then they'll have more time to bring the sign into compliance. I'm not sure if the, the time limits that we proposed are too long or too short in some cases. But, yeah.
I mean, you think about the replacement of signs, I mean, signs are expensive, you know, so the, the money, the monetary value we have on these things isn't, isn't a lot. But you have some of those that are maybe in better shape and been around for a while, I mean, the maximum you get is really two years out of it, at which point you have to bring it into compliance, so that's not a long time, I mean, that'll be, that'll be an on kind of going process as we're, as we're going through all of them, you know, I think, you know, the idea being there that we get this resolved fairly quickly. And we thought the timeline that we provided there kind of does that, you know, I mean, it's, I guess, I'd be comfortable, people are gonna like it a whole lot, but it'll make the city look better. it a whole lot, but, it'll make the city look better.
Yeah, my, I like the short timeframe, but I think we're gonna get a lot of kickback on that and stuff.
Haven't, none?
No, none.
I mean, we had the neighborhood, we had the workshops in those areas, and gave it to them, and gave them the sign ordinance ahead of time, and put the link up on the website, and gave it to all of them, I talked to the chamber about it, I talked to Erica, she said she read through the whole thing, I said, well, anything that you see that's weird, let us know, and talked to your members about it, maybe they might think, I mean, bring it, you know, I mean, because we wanna, I don't wanna hear it when I'm at council, you know, I wanna be done, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, and we even, really, it was very few things that they picked out as being the, the thing that, the sword they were willing to die on, or the thing they were gonna fight, and the internally illuminated signs was the one, really, big issue that they came up with, and, and for hotels being able to have their signs lit, not having to turn them off at night because they're sort of 24/7, I sort of agreed with that, that made sense.
Do you have anything that we're grandfathered, grandparented by one of these older leaseholds on the Barcadero, I mean, this talks about an illegal sign, but it could be a sign that was valid when the original lease was negotiated?
Michael, almost any sign that was put up was legal when it was put up, because we didn't have any sign ordinance at some point.
So, it'd be considered a legal, non-conforming sign?
Legal, non-conforming.
So, if, there's provisions, so if it, you know, looks like it's deteriorating, then we require it to be brought into compliance, but, it'd be fine to leave as is, yeah.
But this also brings in legal, non-conforming signs into conformity with this two-year timeframe, correct?
We would only require them to follow these regulations if they follow number 2 on page 44, if they're deteriorated to a certain amount, or if they are doing construction on the property to a certain extent, then we require them to bring the signs into conformance with these regulations, and then we have the tied, tied-lens lease agreement provision also in that section, on the next page in 45.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
So, correct me then, or just expand on that for me, if, if a sign was put up and it was back before that we had the original sign ordinance, and it's, so therefore it's legal, non-conforming, when, when would that sign be grandfathered out? If it's a continuing use, and it had, and they haven't come in for a new CUP or a new business license, when would that sign be?
So, if it's considered a legal, non-conforming sign, which sounds like what you're asking, we would require it to bring, we would require it to, you know, update the sign to follow these regulations if the sign has deteriorated over 50% of the physical value, or if there's extensive, you know, physical structural replacements or renovation on the site.
Okay, so...
Or else it'd be allowed to stay.
So, essentially, if they're, if, if they are not doing, if they're doing less than 50% of renovation on the, on the project, and the sign is in good shape, then they can keep that sign essentially till it falls down?
No, so the 50% provision was if the sign looks like it's deteriorated to a certain extent, if there's any, whenever the physical structures on a commercial property are replaced or renovated, all non-conforming signs at the site shall be removed or made to conform to the provisions of this chapter, so, if there's any, really any, like, construction occurring on the site, that...
Then it's brought into conformity.
Right.
But then, if this, if they're not doing, if they're not doing renovation, what I'm trying to get at is, is there any, is there any way in this ordinance to, to catch signs that the, it's continuing use, they're not doing any major renovations, they're not doing any, they're not coming before for a building permit, the signs, they regularly maintain them, so there's not a, there's not a gross deterioration in it, but they just have a continuing sign there that, that is non-conforming to this code, where do we catch those signs, or do we?
We don't catch them, we don't catch them because likely they were permitted in a manner that was consistent with the code that predated it, that's normally gonna be the case, there could be some that are, under the first scenario that you mentioned, that maybe predate everything that we had, that's, and then we don't know, I mean, sometimes we don't, our records, I mean, I've told you this many times, and I'll probably continue to tell you this over the years, we have broken record, our records during certain time periods were not good, and so, we didn't maintain them, and so, it's unclear, sometimes we don't have any documentation for a building that's had a whole bunch of things go on to it, and you're like, where is it? And we don't have it, and so, sign ordinance, the sign permits are part of those, and so sometimes it seems like, it looks like, connecting all the dots that maybe it was approved, but we don't know, or there's the scenario where the approvals, like the Albertson Shopping Center, for example, they were specifically allowed to have their monument sign out there, and so, there would be no expectation on the part of us that we'd be removing those, unless there's, unless there's a change to the ordinance that changes the tenor of it, or the direction of it, and says, hey, you know, we want all non-conforming signs to go away, it's not normally the tact that you see in sign ordinances, and it hasn't been, that hasn't been, you know, any of the desire that seems to be brought forward during the seven years we've been updating the ordinance.
So, let me just kind of expound on that, I'm sorry to take everybody's time up, but, so we have a major sign such as the Cypress Plaza sign, it's got Albertsons on there as one list, and several other, you know, Rite Aid, or, so, say, you know, Albertsons changes hands and becomes something else, would that trigger that sign to be brought into conformity if they changed the Albertsons part of it, or?
No, just legal, non-conforming was approved as part of the development plan for the, for the site.
So, that's, that sign would stay up in...
I mean, I guess if they did, I mean, if there was, they did a major remodel to the center or something, and there was some issue related to the signs, I guess we have a little bit of an in there here, because it talks about that here, but, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it doesn't, there hasn't been a desire expressed to do those types of things, so the ordinance doesn't really pick it up, I mean, I, I mean, it's not something that we've heard folks come forward as an issue, so, we didn't come down super strong on that because we're really probably dealing with the signs that were approved previously that should be okay.
So, the multi, the multi-store signs, you know, there's, isn't a trigger if once, if, say, 50% of the, you know, 30% or 50% or whatever that ratio would be of the tenants' change, then they don't have to come back with a new, new sign plan, or they just do an amendment?
So, I mean, so the signage is actually on the building for the tenant space, when it changes, that would have to be fixed.
Right.
Or brought, or brought in by our ordinance, brought into conformance, you know, if the thing goes away, so, but if you had the monument sign out front, that thing was probably approved with different, the sign permit that went along with it probably had Albertsons on it, or whatever that was supposed to be there before, and a couple of other things, it just showed them on the sign, or generic, no sign, just said store on it or something, so it just kind of showed you the dimensions of the sign, and this is where you put them, and there you go, and that's always approved, I mean, that's, it just, that's my experience in seeing what those things looked like in the past, probably wasn't much more than that.
If we would, in one scenario, get into area-specific plans that might have an overlay over top of that, can we supersede some of these things, does it, which, which one has priority, would the, would this, would the specific plan necessarily become a subsection of this, an exception to this that supersedes it?
If we, so, if we adopted a specific plan that had different standards for the area than are in here, then we would need to go back and update these standards to reflect that, and have a reference to it, you always, one of the things the city's not done, but you're, you should do if you're doing a good job, is, is updating your ordinances to make them like, so, we're lucky, we're updating everything at one time, so, all of our major land use documents will be consistent, and we'll have a starting point from zero, but as we amend things, or if we do things like you're talking about, specific plan for this area, specific plan for that area, master plan for this area, we would want to update our codes as we're doing that to make them consistent, so we maintain that consistency over time, so there would be a reference in here to that specific area, or a plan that was done and said, okay, default to the requirements for that, because that'll be the latest and greatest.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, I'm trying to get, a roundabout way of getting to it is, do we want, do we want to have a, essentially have a grandfather, you know, drop-dead date on, you know, on these non-conforming signs that may be legal but do not meet the new, they would not be able to be put in the new, they would not be able to put up with this new ordinance, I guess that's the overall question.
It would depend, for me, how many are you talking about?
There's a bunch.
There's a bunch.
I mean, there's a bunch, I mean, you'd be making all the bigger businesses in town pretty unhappy.
You know, you could see any of the multi, the master plan signs, you know, the Albertsons, even Spencer's, you can kind of go down, and any of the big signs that you see on, from the road, you know, that would need to be brought into compliance, so I guess that's the question that I'm, you know, want to get some feedback on.
Ooh.
And what do you think, Scott? I mean, we're...
I think that's a very difficult road, though, yeah, I mean, you're literally talking about all the bigger commercial businesses in town.
Right.
Yeah, would have problems, we have a lot of, a lot of the hotels in town don't have signs, it would be compliance with the ordinance moving forward as well, so you have a lot of those, I mean, you just, I mean, there's just a bunch, you know, I can think of that are non-conforming, as long as they're maintaining it, the idea is that, you know, you're okay with it, this is the way that it is, it's fine, and again, there's not been any, at least, direction that I've seen predating today to go down that road, except it does create a lot of problems, and I mean, you'd have a lot of unhappy people, I mean, a lot of unhappy businesses were we to go down that road?
Yeah.
You know, the signage is expensive, it's worth a lot of money, I mean, I think, if we were able to clean up all the, just illegal signage that we have, I mean, I can't even, I mean, that's gonna be a ton of work, too, but, I mean, it's gonna make a huge difference, it's not something that's minor, I mean, it's gonna be a big deal.
So, operationally, let's say, let's just look at Spencer's, for instance, okay, so you sell the business, okay, they sell the business, it transfers, is it part of the transfer that, that sign's gonna, you know, is that a conformist?
Well, unless they had to, you know, reconstruct it to maintain it or something, that would be the deal.
But they would be able to, even if you...
It's the, it's the non-conforming section that talks about the deterioration, 50% of its value, so, I mean, we'd have to have an evaluation done, and say, okay, it's that, and then the pole sign Spencer's is gone, you know, I mean, that could happen.
I guess to me, the thing I'm trying to remember is, you know, I hate to bring up Spencer's, but that's the easiest one to talk about, they probably still have, I don't know, 40% of that lot's still buildable, they've probably got at least one or two more pad sites out in front, and then, if I'm not mistaken, that strip that's next to where the farmer's market is, is theirs, too, or it could be conceived of being brought in, I would think that when someone raises the level of, of intensity on the site, there's a trigger, you know, the, I don't know where the build-out is on the Albertsons one, that one strikes me that, I don't know if there's another pad site...
There's one.
In theory, still there or not.
There's one small one out front.
Yeah, because I think as the pads, as the front pads obscure the signage on the larger strip, if you want, whatever you want to call it generically, that the bigger group sign makes more sense to have, you know, Spencer's is kind of silly to have because, well, there's Spencer's, you see about 200 feet of parking lot with Spencer's on, so I'm kind of torn, it strikes me there are, there should be some kind of trigger, you know, if there's an intensity of development, there's, it's to everybody's advantage to upgrade the sign to something a little more sensitive design-wise, I would hate to see Spencer's have to arbitrarily conform to something when they may have economic pressure just to maintain what they have, but, it would strike me, it's like, we had a really good debate, it was a, we had, we had differences of opinion when, was it Burger King across from, when they specifically built some of the architectural part of the building that allowed them to raise the sign up above where the, what you might call the hip roof canopy was, or something like that, you know, that was, that's a, that's a pretty interesting piece, I think, to discuss, so, I'm not sure where that trigger is for something like the Albertsons sign, it's, it's a trickier one when you get down to the, I always think the other end of that where Cookie Crock is, those things are really hard to see sometimes from...
That center over there is, is the, is the one that suffers the most from not having one sign, you know, that's out front for everybody on it, that's the reason you get the blade signs and the portable signs and all those things, because no one knows that you're up there, you know, I mean, you probably know where AutoZone is, but, I mean, you know, the rest of the stuff up there, maybe not, and so, that is kind of a tough one there, I mean, they don't have great signage, and they're off, except for parcels, it's not like a single, you know, it's like a single owner that they lease all that stuff out, they're on separate parcels that are owned by different people, it's, it's an odd kind of thing.
You get that little section, too, where Dollar Store is kind of in front of those other places, but I'm not even sure in my mind I could tell you who's back there, so, it's tough, I just, I just totally agree, though, that as the downtown especially would be the thing to develop, and we're seeing potentially some of that change being the stuff that's maybe more hopefully imminent than some of these other places, I don't have any great hope that North Main Street's gonna become an economic engine for the city, but I would think that downtown probably has a likelihood of some of these things changing faster than some of the other areas, the Barcadero, I don't think's gonna change radically, we've been leasing those things out for years, but, you know, I think where there's the most likelihood of change is where you want to have the policy trigger these things to go back and clean up.
Well, it does, I mean, it does talk about, you know, significant reconstruction at the site, or, you know, remodel, I mean, a big redo at the property could trigger the requirement for us to take a look at that.
Maybe that's where the, that's the thing, is that language needs to be more definitive as to what that trigger point is.
I agree with you, especially when there's a...
We'll take a look at that, there's under 44, 1768, 140A, 2B, we'll, we can beef that last piece up, and maybe be a little more explicit about what that looks like.
Since we're just talking about some potentially problematic instances, is Sonic under the legacy of the old sign ordinance based on when they put in for a permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were approved with the, with the signs and everything, it's part of the whole package, they're in plan check right now, by the way, they came in like today.
I think you answered this question on page 51, it was like on E, was just wondering what the maximum height of any sign not attached to a building such as a monument or an architectural sign that's separate from the building, and this one, that was one of the questions on the Burger King, was it, was it separate, or was it not separate from the building? So, so I think you answered that, either six or eight feet is the maximum height of any new sign.
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on the sign type, and then, yeah, it depends on the science, sign type, so, monument signs, maximum height would be eight feet, architectural signs, also eight feet.
And we definitely went in with the intent here to get rid of that sort of highway-oriented tall signage, because it's unnecessary.
And then, for the master sign program, and the, you know, you get your allowed extra sign bonus for submitting that, those have height restrictions, so, that's where there's some four feet or six feet height limits there for the extra monument or architectural sign, you'll get through those provisions.
Okay, okay, good, that's most of the comments I've had on this, I think, you know, I think it's, it's a really good package, and I commend you, Ryan, and everybody else that's worked on it, and thank you, Dr. Teft.
Yeah, it's, it's been an experience, I'll say that.
Yeah, so, in summary, just, you know, the main thing I would push is to get, to get the internally lit signs. signs, illuminated signs out of there, and that's going to be a big push.
So, so you know where I'm going to go with that? I'm probably going to go, I'm going to take a medium approach to that and put what the suggestion was specifically, for me, when we go to council, that they be, not be in there at all. And I'll also tell them that that was staff's preference to begin with, but the business community is really concerned about that. And then we'll probably look at pushing them away from, again, I think maybe just pushing them away from the downtown and the, and the Embarcadero in general, and maybe allowing them in some, in the other two areas. So, my, my, that would be me putting it there. Your suggestion was, hey, let's not have them. And we'll put that in there too, so you're, so you're being heard there. I'm going to be, I'll put it as, you know, sort of splitting the baby a little bit.
Yeah.
And, and then the council will tell us what they want us to do.
Yeah.
They'll go down that road. I mean, it's, it's a good thing, and maybe, you know, I'll probably even let Erica with the chamber know, so she can reach out to her folks, so they can have a say about it too, so.
Yeah.
So, so at least there's a, there's an even conversation about it, I think.
Yeah, yeah. You know, as far as where they would be best allowed, would probably be in the industrial areas. And, and maybe on, you know, the Quintana area is what I would see. But I think definitely anything, you know, because one of the, you know, if you've had the experience of coming into a harbor at night, then, you know, glare is, is a navigational hazard. You know, there's been several stories of people running into Stern's Wharf because of the red stoplight there at the base of Stern's Wharf. They think it's a channel marker, and you run aground.
That's not fantastic.
So, it's, but, okay, any other final comments?
No, I just want to say, say thank you to staff. This is really an amazing thing, that, well documented, easy to understand. Everything seems to be there. It's really a great effort.
Richard?
Ditto, yeah. Thanks, guys.
We'll roll it into this, and we'll be moving on to council within, probably in the next, I'm guessing within the next three months, we'll hit council with it and get their input. And then, the next time you'll see it will be as part of the comprehensive package of the zoning code update. So it'll be, all be in there, and we'll have commentary about the things we changed and that type of thing, so you can see where that's at, so, okay?
Okay, great. If we could get it on Wednesday instead of Thursday?
Fair enough, fair enough.
Okay, moving on, thank you very much. See, at this point, I think we're, let's see, where are we already? Planning Commissioners' comments?
I, I do have one.
Okay, Richard?
It's a little story.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was on my bike, riding around on a trail, and I met a, met my friend. He grew up here, and he's a musician, and we got to talking about just, just several things, you know, internationally what's going on, and locally, as far as local politics and, and the sewer plant. And so he, he asked me, he goes, what is your job? You know? And so, I kind of started thinking about it, and I kind of answered, I think it's like threefold. So I, so I said, you know, my job is to represent the best interest of the citizens of this community. And as a planning commissioner, to help interpret to the best of my ability the rules and regulations as they apply to new development and construction. But as a citizen of Morro Bay, who has deep knowledge in the WRF and the wastewater treatment project that I've been involved with since 2003, it is not only my right, but it's my duty to share my knowledge with the citizens of this community of Morro Bay. And I think that's all I'm going to say about that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Richard. Okay, Community Development Directors' comments?
So, there's only three of you, but we do, we are coming up on holiday seasons, all right? And I was sort of taking a poll as to where you are all, whether you're going to be around or not. You know, we have, we close for the Thanksgiving holiday, the 23rd to the 24th. Our meeting schedule for November is the 7th and the 21st, so 21st runs up into that week, right? And was just sort of taking a poll to see if you guys were going to be around or not, or whether we were going to run into an issue with quorums or not. And this would be the time for me to know that, so we could plan accordingly.
I'm, I'm good, except I'm going to be, if you were going to add a meeting, like if council wanted to meet with us before the end of the year, I don't have any extra time.
That's okay, that, that won't happen before the end of the year, I don't think.
In terms of our scheduled meetings, I think I'm here for the rest of the year.
Okay, great.
In November, the beginning of November, what's the date?
So, so our first, our first commission meeting will be the 7th, and the second one will be the 21st. The 21st would be the one I'd be, well, I don't, go ahead, Dan.
The 7th would be a problem, but the 21st is no problem.
Okay, all right. So we'll have our, on the 7th, we should have our new, our new commissioner. So we should be good on that, and Joe will be back, so, yeah, we should be fine. That, that's not a problem. Yeah, we should be good then.
I, I don't have any planned excursions, so...
Okay, that's great, that's good. I appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure I, I didn't want to, you know, gear up and load up a planning commission meeting and then didn't have a quorum. That would be, that would not be great, so, that's great, perfect. I don't, oh, and then, like I said, we were going to be having, the council's going to be interviewing the new planning commissioners on the 24th, at a special meeting before the actual city council meeting that day, so. And there are three candidates, so, that's all I have.
Are we, are you looking at December too? December's still going to be stable?
So, yeah, December, the meeting timeframes for that, there wasn't a conflict, I didn't have my calendar up, hold on a second. So for that, we are looking at 5th to the 19th, so it doesn't run up against the holiday. I mean, you take the whole, unless you're taking a couple of weeks off.
What about the Joint Harbor HAP?
So the joint, so for the Working Waterfront Measure D Committee, actually, Ron Reisner sent out an email yesterday, asking us when we were going to reschedule that. Eric, the harbor director's at the Harbor Masters Conference, so he's not here right now. And so I haven't had a chance really to talk to him. I'll talk to him when he gets back and probably send an email out to him by, before the end of the week, to touch base and see if we can, you know, look at his schedule, my schedule, to see when we're both open, and then send that out to the group, so, move forward with that.
Okay, great. And if, if you guys have any comments on the working waterfront or the, the other issues, then forward them to me, or forward them to Scott, and we'll have them included in the, in the meeting. Okay, so at this point, if there's nothing else, then we shall adjourn to the next regular planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on November 7th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.